Alright, so it's six o'clock. I don't know, call a meeting order. So first, we have the proposed proper tax levy public, public hearing. Um, so we'll call that to order. Uh, so Julie, and I've seen some handouts already. Julie handed out the tax proposals. And Julie want to explain those real quick, so everybody can receive the new form.
Yep. So, um, this is the first year that a new law went into place that, um, added, uh, some, uh, an additional, uh, public hearing. Um, and so this is that first public hearing. And, um, so those of you who are here for that, um, you all got notices in the mail if you live in the district or whatever. And so that's the notice that you got is what we're talking about right now. Um, what I will tell you is, uh, because I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure that the governor signed, uh, the SSA or supplemental, uh, student aid package today, which allowed the supplemental student aid rate to be at two point five percent. So that is actually going to lower our tax rate back down to exactly what it was for last year. So there will be no, the tax rate will be the same. What we have to do, um, according to law is we have to sort of uh, publicize our worst case scenario, right? So if we don't, if they haven't settled on what the supplemental state tax rate is going to be, we have to assume the worst, like maybe there's not going to be any increase, which is what those, um, your notices assume is that there is a zero percent increase, which would then increase your property taxes to help, uh, increase the aid that we get, okay? But because they just today, um, signed it, I think it's at two and a half percent. So that will lower it to, um, our, uh, our current tax rate or this year's tax rate, um, is at eighteen point six nine. And that's where it'll be for next year as well. Um, what else do you want me to tell you?
Yeah. So I think in an ideal world,
Yeah.
the SSA would have been settled in February.
Yeah.
We could have had, we could have had our actual hard numbers, but things were slowed down in the state capital this year. So that's, that's kind of why, like Julie says, you can start here and go down. But if we say, if we wanted to say, we were figuring three point five percent. So we said here and we want to get two point five, we can't go back up.
Like, we can't raise the taxes then after we publicize those, those proposed notices.
So then you're in the hole because you've overestimated on the stating. We can always come down, but we just can't go back. You can't raise it after it's published. But, um, that being said, uh, is there any one who would like to speak? Tax rate?
Oh, no.
Yeah, a couple of comments. I know some great news, of course, but, uh, still I have a couple of questions open before this news came out. What kind of cuts were being discussed to not have to raise taxes? This could happen next year, right?
Sure.
Well, more likely, right? Taxing it and just inherently for fun. So what kind of things was, if we're looking at to cut, not having to do?
So I think, um, just keep an eye on, on, uh, you know, your, your supplies curriculum. Um, we try to, you know, keep it on, keep our staff where it's at. But it wouldn't be adding staff. Yeah, operational sharing, um.
What's that?
Uh, so say, so yeah, let me explain. So say, so we're going to have a new superintendent that next year, we're going to be sharing that superintendent with another district. So the state gives you money, like X amount of students per, per position. So the state will give you money to incentivize you to share positions with another district. So, um, some of those options we've, we've looked at. Um, so superintendent would be a big, a big key piece to that. Um, that's quite a few dollars coming in from the state. Um, that'll help reduce.
In addition to the sharing amount, so the wage amount will be cut basically in half as well.
And then for superintendent sharing position, they count that as nine additional students. So at roughly seven thousand dollars per student, we would get an additional sixty-three thousand dollars as a Baxter district. And then the district we're going to share with will also get into the sixty-three thousand dollars. So that'll help offset the salary of new superintendent. And then we're still only paying half of his salary because the other districts can pick up the other half of it. And so you can get up to twenty-one additional sharing positions or operational sharing positions. And so with hiring the new superintendent and sharing all the ones we can, right now we're at twenty, but we'll be able to max get up to twenty-one. Probably most likely we'll be able to get up to twenty-one. So we'll be at the absolute max of what we can get. But that's an additional, whatever, twenty-one times seven, roughly seven thousand of just additional money that we'll be able to recoup to help offset costs.
And the superintendent's new this year, we've, we've been sharing near speeches like HR positions, uh, buildings and grounds,
Transportation.
transportation curriculum director. So we've been sharing some of these others before. It's just the superintendent is kind of the big piece of the pie, I guess. Um, so yeah, we've been in this process before. It's just, um.
So help me understand this. So the, the tax money I'm paying is for a part-time superintendent?
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
Yeah. So, yep. But that tax money is less because like, say, we're paying half that salary.
Oh, any other cuts that were discussed or put on the table, serious discussions about where, right, budget can be trimmed or?
Uh, there was a voluntary, uh, retirement package offer. Um, so that, um, will reduce the general fund. And then on that incentive package, um, you can move those monies to the management fund, um, which helps alleviate the strain on the general fund. Um, so that was done. And so then on, on a one position and then we'll rehire, we'll rehire that physician back, but it will be at a lesser cost because there's less, uh, tenure and, um, things like that. Uh, we have, um, at the admin level, um, we have reduced a benefit, um, the insurance benefit from, um, a family insurance paid to just a single only paid. You'll find that, um, happening a lot around, uh, the state with other school districts. They're going from a family to a single, uh, just because of the nature of the volatility.
And then, I don't know if it was in the messaging that I got from the mail or where those came from, I don't recall. But one of the reasons for the tax increase or the shortage of the budget was, um, enrollment was down. Is that, is that accurate?
The certified enrollment is down. So there's two pieces to the enrollment. There's certified enrollment, which is the students that live in your district. Um, that's where the supplemental state aid is based off of. So the students that live in your district, um, times the per student amount, that's the amount of your supplemental state aid. That was down. And keep in mind now, we're a year behind as well. So, um, we had a certified enrollment just this last October. Those funds won't be available to us till next year, right? And we were down just a couple of the certified. Actually, um, net, we're only down like one student because our open enrollment actually increased quite a few. And the open enrollment is those districts that are around us that, uh, choose to go here.
But we don't get as much, how are you guys? For each, for the kids that live in our district, we get a little bit more funding per kid. And then the open enrollment kids, we still get funding, but not as much.
Yep.
Some of that funding stays with their home district.
But you don't see that in the certified. It's in the, it's in a different place because we have to actually build all those other districts ourselves to, to get those monies. And then they write us a check and send it that way. So that's why you don't see it.
So was it accurate, was it accurate then with my comment on the enrollment is down? Did that go out in a message from?
So on the, you'll probably even see it there. Like it's very small writing and we have no control over that document. But, um, and we only have so many characters, but it, it says in there certified enrollment, um, uh, decreased slightly. And so the certified did, but the open enrollment increased. But we don't have the open enrollment funds as of yet until those are billed for.
Go ahead. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. That's it for public comment for the public hearing. We'll adjourn the public hearing. So do we have a motion to adjourn? So I'm moved. Second. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is adjourned. Move on to the regular meeting. Call the orders. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to move the, the solar implementation above.
We're going to move that to the very first thing after the consent items so that
I was getting.
After the agenda, so they don't have to stay.
So we need to approve the agenda.
Yeah, motion to approve the agenda. So move. Second. Favorite say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, okay. So we'll move on to our solo presentation.
We're going to flip things around a little bit here, um, so that we can get our solar presentation people out of here when you're done. Unless they want to save for the meeting too.
Right. Um, would y'all rather me just, obviously we have the presentation that we chaired, right? But would y'all rather me just verbalize what we're, the plan and then let's find out. Um, so I appreciate everybody's time. Appreciate the opportunity. My name's Denver Williams. Um, I work as a part of the Emmett Smith Consortium of Companies. Uh, today I'm representing four thirteen solutions. We are the energy development arm, uh, for Mr. Smith. Um, originated in two thousand and nineteen, um, as a part of the growth out of a Cowboys accelerator, um, that our team was a part of. Originally, the goal and intent of four thirteen solutions was to serve internal EJ Smith assets. We had, um, a, a lot of people know obviously Mr. Smith from the football career. Some might know him from the Dancing with the Stars. What a lot of folks don't know is the entrepreneurial passion they had post-retirement. And so he actually got into real estate back under the Cowboys with the Proctor stall back, post-retirement. Grew that until it sold with JLL, branched out with our CEO now David Mosley and started EJ Smith Enterprises, um, which is basically a real estate brokerage and advisory group. In two thousand and fourteen, he started EJ Smith Construction. Again, kind of seeing some vision in the real estate space and then being able to create a company to have cyclical origination. I was fortunate enough to meet Mr. Smith in two thousand and eighteen. Worked out some transactions as far as, uh, some renewable tax equity transactions. We can talk about that in some of the economics and how those work, but that led to a relationship and the creation of four thirteen. Um, what started with internal, uh, review and internal implementation quickly led to, uh, private contracts and private resources. So right now we're in construction for a little bit over a hundred million dollars across the country for large auto manufacturers and distributors. Um, Maravany, Toyota with a D, a couple of those, uh, name sets. The success that led there pushed us into the public space. And so we've been working for the last eighteen months now with not only municipalities, but also school districts and helping them meet and exceed their renewable goals and needs. And so as a byproduct of that, our partnership with UBS, we were able to obviously retain your guys' bills, start to understand kind of the footprint that exists here as far as your energy usage, what your spend is, and then how we can implement technology to be able to reduce that. The goal for us was to repurpose under, underutilized roof areas, um, for the creation of renewable generation. As a byproduct of that, we were able to create over five hundred kilowatts worth of capacity on the rooftop here at this facility. That capacity is now going to offset the current usage by sixty percent, which means that we're able to reduce the overall district's bill by a little bit over forty-two thousand dollars just by utilizing the renewables components. Very simply put, we will utilize the electrons created by the renewables before you would use your incumbent meter resource. And so what that does, that naturally creates an avoidive toss mechanism in which you're not, the meter's never turning, right? It's never spinning as a byproduct. Our group also understands the challenges that are faced in the public space and wanted to create not only different finance vehicles, but also mechanisms within the contracting to add different protections for you guys by product. And so what we've done is we've taken an existing financial vehicle, what's called a power purchase agreement. It basically allows the district to implement renewables for no cost. To us as the developer and financier, we would take all of the risk, all of the expenditure on all of the equipment, the installation, and then no different than exactly how you pay your power bill right now, when the solar is produced, you would pay for that solar energy. We found that we can create that energy for a lower rate than what you're currently paying your utility. And so for all intents and purposes, we've been able to create a financial vehicle in which the district has no capital outlay and creates an energy arbitrage on what they're currently paying from their energy provider. Apart from that, we have two mechanisms that allow us for protections for the district as well. One of the biggest challenges that we've seen in the public space was not willing to encumber future boards for decisions. And when we think about renewables specifically photovoltaic, we're talking about a thirty-year life of asset. Reason why we call it a thirty-year life of asset is because we have thirty-year warranties on all of our implementation, all of our technology that's going to be implemented as a byproduct of the installation. So for us in thinking about that, we wanted to be able to add in protection. So two things that occurred. The first thing is we outlay a production guarantee. So every module that we place on the rooftop, we also have some stuff going on the bus bar. And then we have, uh, kind of a showpiece for the athletic facility or for the athletic field. All of those things post-engineering are going to be outlined from year one all the way through year thirty, what they're going to produce. We're also going to put in the contract a true-up date. Normally it's an anniversary mechanism. Let's say that we power flow the system on September the first. Every single year at September the first, we would sit down and we would compare to what's in our contract versus what we actually predict. We have our own independent asset, right? If we miss that by more than a ten percent variance, there's a true-up mechanism for the district. All intents and purposes, basically guaranteeing the economics that we're putting in place within a ninety percent of it. The additional thing that we do, because we understand the encumbers of future boards and signing a twenty-year transaction or a twenty-year contract through a power purchase agreement, we wanted to make sure that our PPA rate or the rate that you'd be paying for your solar would never exceed the rate that you're currently paying through your energy. So the great news that we have here, obviously Iowa has become a very progressive state in renewables, specifically with the way the utility handles and transfer of that electricity. That's the reason why we're very bullish about moving into the state and working with the multiple districts that we're currently working. As a byproduct of that as well, we found that we can create a scenario into which not only can we offset current costs, but we can also fix others. So whereas we don't necessarily know what the utilities are going to do until every December, when they have to publish their, their tariff schedule, we could for all intents and purposes say that for the next twenty years, we know exactly what sixty percent of our power is going to cost. It's coming from the city. And that's the power that not only the, the power purchase agreement, but also some of the protections that we put in place. Beyond that, another important factor us is trying to make something beyond or create value beyond just the electron, beyond just the economic value itself. And the public sector, specifically the education sector, give us the ability to do that. And so what we're really passionate about is being able to utilize the implementation of these resources to either create or extend science, technology, engineering, architecture and math curriculums or STEM or STEAM, right? Whatever your vernacular is. And so that could be as simple as education centers that are created to run data depending on the age level of student or education level of student, or it can be customized to literally fit whatever need. We've got other applications that are occurring in Illinois as well as Texas right now in which we're utilizing the asset for certification for the seniors. So the seniors are able to come out and graduate with a certification for a bring job that in full transparency, when I'm looking over transcripts or resumes, that's one of the first things that we look for. And so being able to provide something not only for the students, but also that could benefit the community is an opportunity that we would have utilizing the asset as kind of a catalyst. The great news as well for us, and again, depending on y'all's guidance, current method and how all things push through, is that we're already slotted for late spring and summer construction on multiple school districts here in the state, right? And so what we found is that obviously that late spring and summer construction fit very well because we have less traffic here on the campus. All of that said, we have no problem working within the schedule. Um, again, what you'll find with, and I think what y'all found already is that, um, one, our goal is to be as least invasive as possible, right? So not only kind of from the communication and process to make sure that we're not disrupting anything here as far as business as usual, but also with the racking mechanisms and the way that we implement the asset. So we're not going to be penetrating the rooftop. We're not going to be poking a lot of holes or any of those types of things, right? As a part of it, again, the entire concept is to be able to have as large of an impact as possible, as much value without any disruption. Total implementation for us, um, guys on the ground as far as people actually working is probably forty-five good weather working days. The rest of the time is going to be spent engineering, permitting, and then dealing with local regulatory as far as aligning with the utility and the interconnection and all of those things. Um, so again, for us, very confident and, and what we're able to push here, um, obviously very confident in the contract that we've created just because again, it's almost specifically written and intended for public entities themselves. Um, and then obviously for us with kind of, on the growth that we're expecting, um, as a group and as a company, but when we look at the benefit of possible parlay marketing approaches, right? One thing that Mr. Smith and the entire team is very passionate about is what we're doing here, right? It's a, it's a part of it. And so we would have the opportunity, you guys would have the opportunity as a district, upon success, right? We could broadcast the message, the message as far and wide as you guys want, right? I think about that. It's kind of like a, uh, a water faucet sometimes, um, with that. But again, additional tools to add value above and beyond, just to make it more than an energy resource and more than just a renewable energy resource. Um, obviously we've got full presentation with economics, uh, production factors, case studies, guys, literally anything that you would think of from a due diligence perspective, um, around this project and, and many others that we're currently doing. But, um, obviously open for questions or, or anything.
Mentioned the, the true up. Can you, can you explain that a little more again?
Yep. So basically what happens is when you're power flowed day, when we get green tagged from the utility, right? That's going to be considered our anniversary day. And so what we would have is we have in the contract called out as a scope of work, a meeting. Now, it doesn't have to be in person like this, right? But it could be a meeting into which we review the contract because in the contract we say what, you know, we just use twenty twenty-five, but what we're going to produce in twenty twenty-five. Once you've got an entire calendar year data, right, from our, we have an independent production meter that also is a part of the asset implementation, right? So independent from the utility, independent from everybody else, you've got your own data set. So we just compare those notes on those two. If it's a difference between the two, for us, it's a claim. In full transparency, it's a revenue put, insurance policy. It's in the background on these things. We do it on every single one of our assets. So for us, it's applying. For y'all, it's a champ. And literally written at that true-up date. And see, exact same thing that happens with our avoided cost, right? I think one of the biggest challenges that, um, is faced right now in the energy sector, specifically renewables and some of these third-party contracts is that there's no protections around the solar pricing, right? And so a lot of times those things have escalators in them and who's to say that the solar energy is not going to escalate more than your utility, right? Because that's the unknown, right? We don't know what they're going to do and they operate really at their own freedom, right? It's a, it's a byproduct of it. Now they have to tell us every single December. So that's the reason why that also fits with that true-up date is that we're going to know every single December of every year, exactly what your rate is. And if something happens that we've been upside down for a month or two or X amount of time, right? That's a true-up mechanism as well. So both of those things occur on our anniversary. The goal for us guys is to eliminate some of the barriers that have existed between public entities being able to adopt these types of technologies, right? And the biggest one has been the capital expenditure because you guys couldn't take advantage of the tax credits, right? We're subsidized severely. Our industry, so the majority of the private sector can mitigate probably forty to sixty percent of the total cost just through tax incentives. You guys couldn't do that until the passing of the inflation reduction, which now allowed for direct pay mechanisms, right? But again, all of those things have been put in place to kind of create barriers between you guys and those renewable assets. Our goal is to not only create a financial vehicle, but a contract that everyone can feel rid of bounds, um, not only our side, but then also you guys as a district. And then for us, we're looking at this as, as a numbers game truly. We've got a, a stretch goal of one point five gigawatts, um, under operation by twenty thirty-three. And, uh, we're, we're going to do some work to get there, right? It's a, it's a byproduct. We've got some big jobs going. Um, but the push is real for us. And like I said, real bullish on the state here and happy to, uh, happy to be here.
My questions kind of go to maintenance. Get it in, got it running. That's great.
Yep.
Um, but what's it look like from a longevity purpose? Like we look at the Texas, so all of that that recently happened. I'm sure you're like, oh, right. But, uh, there's a lot of concern about that, especially here with hail. Maybe it's not the solar panels that got damaged, but our roof, what happens when we need to remove those, this roof? So can you just help us understand the maintenance case?
So under the power purchase agreement, it's a full transfer of risk. And so now any operations, maintenance, reporting, or any liability that arises out of the asset, now falls onto us, four thirteen solutions as the asset owner. So we would be responsible for that. If this was a capital expenditure for the district and you guys were going to be paying for it, then you would also be operating. Now, we would provide guidance and making sure that obviously you have the right scopes of work to prevent any of those types of things. But in, under this scenario, this is going to be, for lack of a better vernacular here, kind of a set it, forget it for the district itself, except for that one time a year that we've got to get together and repair and make sure that all the math is right. So we would be responsible for all of those items. Our goal is a part of the install and you'll see it and, uh, you'll see it when you look at some of the layouts. And as we continue to evolve that, we've made sure to not impede anything that is occurring on the current rooftop. So if there's any RTU units, any type of conduit, any vent fans, anything that would need maintenance items, they have clear walkways too, so they don't have to interfere with the solar. So we make sure to do that, um, as a part of our structural team, and, and we can talk about next steps as well. Um, but as a part of our structural team, we're going to run an analysis on the roof line, right? And make suggestions around that. If there are anything additional that needs to be done there. Ultimately for us, we feel that our modules that are going to be placed on certain areas of roof are going to provide weatherization protection, right? And can actually extend, extend those areas of life of roofs themselves. Um, but basically under the power purchase scenario, anything that arises on us, it's our duty to perform as a byproduct of that as well. Um, and if we don't, we have that true-up mechanism tend to pop that. Don't mean to say anything. I'm sorry.
And Denver, do I remember correctly, but let's say we did have something happen to our rooms and we needed to move the solar panels and get the roof fixed. Like, do you guys come move them or like, how, how does that all work?
Yeah. So the, so the beauty of this install is this is going to be a ballasted, non-penetrating install. So if anybody remembers, um, kind of the old school bleachers that used to push in, they're going to be, you remember what I'm talking about? Okay. So. We're looking about a ballast and racking system, right? Uh, it's literally just metal that's, that's weighted back, right? Um, so what can occur in, uh, in needs of, of maintenance or things like that is that literally one panel on clips from one side and then they slide in together. And so you can stack them in either certain stages of the roof, right? To do certain work, or if it's a full blown replacement, then we would come in, take everything down, store that. Once the roof was replaced, then we come back in and reinstall it, right? All of that's obvious from that perspective. Again, we're, we're going to do a full electrical and structural, uh, analysis, right? We'll provide feedback to the district as a byproduct of that, right? If there are additional things, um, in the past, and, and again, we'll have to look at the numbers, but in the past, if there were things that needed to be done with roofs, we've been able to incorporate that as a part of the financial offering. And so there might be some synergies there, but, um, but that would be the, that would be the process. But it would be at our cost to remove the solar and then reinstall.
You mentioned structural. I assume the, you know, you've probably looked at the roofs, but like the actual, can they, the capacity that they can handle? Look at that or?
We feel good about, so if haven't, that's going to be a part. So next steps for us, right? I guess the way that this was, the way that this would roll is that if this is a program that we wanted to look at, right? We have a, uh, a very simple, um, non-binding, uh, LOI, letter of intent, right? That allows us to put some things in place for you guys as far as the rates that we're talking about for the PPA, the terms, these protections that we're doing. It also allows us to be able to get on the ground here and do some work on the electrical side as well as from the structural standpoint. What I can say is that our racking systems that we're utilizing only have four pounds of dead weight, right? It's a part of their overall, uh, push on the roof itself. So again, I know that we've got snow load. That's going to be a factor, right? All of those things are going to go into, uh, the part of the engineering deposits with this. Additionally, we've got some room left on our roof as well because y'all know we added in those, the expansions, right? So we've got some workability there. So if there is a, a scenario into which we have a portion of the roof or a section, right? And then one of the older pieces that doesn't need to be utilized, we could repurpose those for there. Additional to that, if we wanted to, if we lose capacity. Additional to that, if we wanted to, if we lose capacity because of structural, right? And we wanted to repurpose it to the athletic field, then that would be a scenario that we'd look at as well. That would just take coordination with clients to to make sure. But again, we've already got kind of a showpiece solar going out there anyway, so that way people can see that the district is in it. Because y'all guys need to be able to see what's on there, unless you're on the roof or you know that it's there, it doesn't impede the pedestrian right away, so you would never see it. So if by doing something at the at sports facility, then that at least gives people visibility of what the district's adopted. Although the majority of your offset, if not ninety percent of your offset, is all going to be from this roof top.
And are you with the growth that you're hoping for? Do you have enough seats on the ground for the maintenance that would come up?
Yes. So so our, again, guys, and and we can flex this depending on your guys' preference and and availability of labor. Uh, resources and pools here locally. Normally, our goal is that all of our skilled labor is going to be W two. And then fifteen percent of our non-skilled labor would be W two, which means that eighty-five percent of non-skilled labor would try to source locally. Here within the community, right? Those are going to be our guys that are just laying wire, those are guys that are just handing panels, right? Things like that. So we do have a kind of connected communities workforce outreach that we do in areas. So again, we would want to have some piece of that in this, right? As a part of it, just as as a piece of our core tenant, but it would be our W twos that would be the white hats. And when I say W two, guys, what I mean is a part of the E. Smith Consortium, right? So the way that it sets up and and y'all might see this in the deck, but the way that it sets up is. For thirteen solutions incorporated is the developer, the financier, and the asset manager. EJ Smith Construction and CLS Sustainable is the contractor and the operations and maintenance resource. So we're all under the same family tree, it's just a bit, they're all on that.
And so the the way that it works, it'll produce power, but like on a monthly basis, we're going to reduce our energy bill. You guys will reconcile how much we basically paid back towards the equipment in.
Correct, yeah, so. Exactly. So basically what happens is we are able to take advantage of those incentives, right? Directly, I'm not saying that y'all can't now because of direct pay, but under this scenario with a power purchase agreement, we're able to monetize those credits internally. So what we do is we take the total cost of the system, which if this was a capital outlay for us, right? This would be around eight hundred and fifty grand, right? Just throw a round number at it right now, pre-engineered, right? So what we do is we take that eight hundred and fifty grand, net out our incentives that are paid from the government through those tax credits. And then amortize the rest over the term. And so we're looking at a twenty-year term, so all you're seeing is a rate that's displayed off of that amortization of that amount over twenty years. That's also the secret sauce of how we can beat your current utility rate, right? As a part of it, because we're for all intents and purposes knocking down sixty percent of what it takes to create a a generation system, right? Same thing for them on their side, except we're doing it all the time. But yes, the the goal is that we create an energy arbitrage, so you're paying less for your power that's coming from your rooftop. Than what you are from your income that are from your utility. The guarantee is though that we never exceed, no matter what. So no matter what, throughout the entire contract term, you'll never pay more for your renewable electricity than you would for your income. And that's put in place just in case, guys, again, we can never really tell what they're doing, they're they've been up into the right for a long time now, right? Covid and the disassociation of natural gas from KWH, right? All caused that bubble and hasn't came back to court yet. But if they adopted something, you know, like nuclear, right? Or something like that, or they decided to, you know, to cut everybody's rate basis by half, we have to layer in protections from the district. Because if you didn't have those protections, right? You would be paying double, you know, if they just cut you in half, you'd be paying double for your solar than what you'd be paying for your, you know, regular energy, right? And that's not a good deal for you. So for us, right, as for thirteen, as the financiers, we're willing to take the risk that that has happened. Right? We think that even if there is new technology and there are things to where they can cut rates, they're not going to, they'll just blame older infrastructure and fires and all these other stuff. To keep going up until. And so what we can do as a part of this implementation is we can, for all intents and purposes, fix that allotment of your energy. So for the next uh for the next thirty years, basically, we know what sixty percent of your energy is going to cost and it could be outlined in a contract. And so we could go to tax base, could be able to go to, you know, everything, say, all the constituents and say, hey, listen, we have. We know a noun that was unknown before, right? As a part of it, it was an assumption before and we can make an educated guess. Now we've got actually contracted rights that have to be adhered to, right? If there's liquidated damage or some type of, you know, occurrence that happened.
The, and it's all, I know you're explaining this and I'm right after this question, you're going to explain it again, but uh so forty percent, so listen to what you're saying. We've got forty percent for energy bill that we pay aligned to energy, sixty percent is sold, produced by solar. But that, what you're saying though, that. We're paying that to you then, or like, okay?
Yeah, so you have two power, basically two power companies, right? A renewable energy company and then your standard income.
So are we as a school district saving anything? Uh, you hear me out on this one, like, I mean, because what you're generating, we're paying you for that cost. So where do we save anything in all this?
So right now, we've got it at about pretty close to a bill match. I think in year one, we're saving the district fourteen hundred bucks. Um, that is pre-engineered right now, right? So wanted to start very conservative and see how to take that down. Um, what has driven up that cost so far is some contingencies that we have in place, both around structural and electrical. So once our guys get on the ground, they verify those, I can shrink those budgets down, now all of a sudden we get a wider gap. Because again, all I'm doing is just amortizing that net amount over a term and it's giving me a lease rate, basically. If you look at it like a real estate transaction. But yes, or the goal is to create as much of an arbitrage as possible for you guys. Right now, we're at, I think it's fourteen hundred bucks, but the goal is to get to get larger. What we've done so far has been really feasibility of, does this make sense? You know, does this make sense here? How does this make sense? What could we do with it, right? And so we check those boxes. We've got a structural and electrical box that we still got left to check, that I think they would hone in some things. But beyond that, I think those would be the last steps for being able to kind of ultimately determine what that power purchase rate is going to be.
My only other question would be, um, I don't know what to say, but who else in Iowa is doing it? And then what schools currently have a couple of years under their belt that we could speak to?
Yep. So I've got, um, so Iowa is a uh is a new market for us. So we've actually just contracted um two school districts. I don't think I can release their names, I I think we can give them to y'all soon, I just got to get their permission to do it first. Um, they're west of uh Des Moines, right? So they're on that, they're on the other side of there, right? But we do have two that are under contract that are moving into that spring and summer construction. Um, in full transparency, we've got four or five more board meetings that are set up over the next two weeks that are all approval stage board meetings, right? So we went through and done the analysis and so on and so forth. Um, so moving into Iowa, very excited about what's going on here. Um, schools in Texas, uh Florida, New Jersey, and Illinois. Um, case studies all the way back to shoot the first job that I did um previous line. But first job that I did was a set of kindergartens down in Southern Makin. Um, so that was the first set that the first set that we ever did. Obviously, trying to navigate our way back into benefiting the uh the education centers. So, but yeah, we've got case studies, whatever you remember.
I'm assuming we can like, or we can reach out to a board of some other school through email. We can, you know, speak to, just say, hey.
Yeah, no, this has been, you know, Florida ran a uh solar for schools campaign uh not too long after Clean Water Eric came out. That was very successful in which they took federal incentives and then some state dollars, right? And and turn around and incentivize that. And that was really your only, you know, school type of our educate K through twelve education type of program that's ever existed kind of in the country, right? And so what we're trying to do kind of behind the scenes is create a specialized product for the education centers. Where not only can it, you know, encompass some of the stuff that we're talking about with the stem and steam. But then also can provide these other layers of protections around what your utility charges, what you can do within your contract, what you can't do within your contract. All of those things specific for public entities. So kind of trying to take their roadmap, not having the dollars that they necessarily had coming from the state. But trying to layer in other things within the contract and make it advantageous for everybody to spend this thing. Um, the other thing, guys, and again, unless it's a preference of the districts not to, um, we would be utilizing all domestic content as a part of this. So our modules, inverters, racking, um, and ballast and system would all be American-made here. Um, so our panels would come out of Arizona, um, our inverters would come out of Hawaii, and then racking comes out of Ohio.
So the the rates set when we sign the the deal. Would the only caveat, if if alliance rates come down, then that you'd lower it. So theoretically, I guess, if seems like electric rates are always going up, but ours would be locked in with you.
So you would increase that arbitrage every year that they increase that rate? Yes, sir, that's the idea, is that they, even though the savings is, you know, what I said, it's like fourteen hundred bucks year one, right? That we're constant, they keep going up into the ground, right? So you're fixing the costs that you couldn't fix before for a portion of your energy while the other side keeps going. And so we get asked a lot, right? Why wouldn't you just offset a hundred percent of my energy, right? Why wouldn't you put as much solar as you can and and do it, do it? For us, the utility is still the arterial authority, right? Like they they have the be all end all specifically in regulated areas, right? This is a regulated state environment, right? So the utility is the judge, jury, and executioner, right? It's it's a part of it. And so for us, I think maybe challenges or even learning from failure, right? Maybe it's just war flies with honey and vinegar, but going to those guys is a part of creating a greater good asset. And having that type of approach to the table is what led to success for us. And a part of creating a greater good asset for the utility is being able to show that we're offsetting some of the peak times. And then still leaving them enough on the bone, right? And so we like to call it a Goldilocks zone that exists in the market, that's kind of that fifty-five to seventy-five percent offset. Of where you can watch your luck to be, right? For utility to play well with everything, allow you to run through regulatory items and all of those things. The thing that the utility will never tell you guys is that through the implementation of the system, if you think about it, right? Our grid, and this is nationwide, this is in just Iowa, our grid is most stressed between eleven and two o'clock each and every day. Specifically during the summer, about eleven to two o'clock. Well, naturally, what are we doing as a renewable generation asset, photovoltaic, every day between eleven and two o'clock? We're producing our most amount of energy, right? So what they won't turn around and tell you is that we're actually helping them out, because they don't have to serve the district during those times. We're going to be serving ourselves, right? You guys would be serving yourselves. And so we're actually saving them a lot more money than what they, you know, are reflecting as a part of. But anyway, that's a that's a fight for another day. But uh but yes, sir, I think the difference in the approach and then obviously finding that Goldilocks zone. The other thing that we don't want to do, and you'll see this as a part of our analysis, is that we don't want to overproduce too much on a monthly level. Because when we do that, the utility has to credit us back for that power that we're pushing to them. Now, the great news is Iowa's net metering laws, that's what that's called, net meter, right? Amazing, right? Probably best in the country. They're not perfect. And for us, when we're looking at these things, we're looking at stuff that we can put on paper and we can stand behind it for twenty to thirty years, right? And so for us, we would rather not give the utility any water of energy. We'd rather use it all ourselves, right? And not depend on them for the credit, although it says in their tariff schedule, right? That they will pay us, but that they don't have to do it every single December, they can change their rules, right? And so for us, we want to try to layer in as many protections as possible and mitigate as much risk as possible. So that's kind of the that Goldilocks zone that we've got so far.
And then after twenty years, what, I mean?
So we've got, so right, as we talked about, we've got thirty years production guarantee, right? So we know we have a thirty-year asset launch. You have three options at the end of uh at the end of year twenty. You can take ownership for nothing, right? So we just sign over ownership to the district, but at that point, you have to employ operations and maintenance, right? That operations and maintenance that we were covering, you guys would have to pick that up. Um, you'll see in our analysis, we illustrated the cost of that, right? So that way, if the district did want to look at about twenty, you know exactly what the market says those rates are from year twenty-one through year thirty, right? To pay for operations and maintenance. The second option is that you can extend up to three times a five-year period. So you have a five-year extension, you get up to three of those, right? And then the third option, which I haven't seen yet, but I I don't, it doesn't make a lot of sense, is that we would just return the facility back to its useful life, right? So we just come get our stuff and and we go home. But kind of looking at it, still got ten years warranty. And what a lot of folks um that may not comprehend is that specifically with the domestic models that we're using. We're only degradating by half a percent year over year. So that means that even at your thirty, we still got eighty-five percent of useful life on our modules, right? That's the reason why the stuff that they shot up in the in the space station back in the fifties is still running off those same cells, right? They've had to change out the inverters, they've had to do some maintenance around it, right? But the photovoltaic cells, the things that are actually producing the energy are still running, right? And so for us, as a byproduct, we have no problem going out to thirty-five. I think that you'll start to see um public entities and and well, Ohio State's kind of a leader in it. Uh, they did a four-year um energy service agreement with a provider very similar to ourselves. Um, providing kind of the exact same service, right? We're going to produce some energy, you buy it from us at X amount, right? We'll fix the cost for you and it'll be our problem. We'll take care of it, it'll be our duty to perform, and guess what? If we don't, you've got true up mechanisms or there's consequences, right? If you don't, if being XYZ doesn't happen, right? And so I do feel like that we'll start to see some more accepted extended terms into the space. But twenty years for us right now is a good fit, just because of the current laws, it seems to fit well with all of that, right? And all of those things, so we're uh that's kind of the standard. Now, the other news is that um anytime, because of the passing of the Inflation Reduction Act. Um, anytime after twenty-four months of operation, the district can buy the system back, right? Or you can buy out of the PPA. Um, that can be done through fair market valuation from an approved third-party assessor. So you don't actually have to be in the contract for twenty years if something happens that you got a bond referendum or there was some grant money that came through, right? We've had uh districts in the past, and again, this is kind of just some optionality in which we move forward with the PPA. And then actually went, wrote a grant form and got grant dollars in to come in, take out the PPA, right? So a scenario like that could occur, that's something that districts are interested in, but literally it's only a two-year hold. And then after that, it's the exact same thing as what would happen in year twenty, right? If you bought out, now you own the asset, so you're responsible for the operations and maintenance. And again, we can be that resource, right? That provides that, or we can at least provide you with what is fair to the market or what the market tells us it should cost you. So that way you know you're getting a fair shake with whoever you're utilizing.
I guess the other thing, like, like, your company's been in business for quite a while. But I guess what would happen five years down the road if your company no no longer exists or or that?
Yeah, I I think that's, you know, ultimate survivability of the consortium, right? I I think that the way that Mr. Smith looks at it is he's looking at it as a family business. We've got um actually his his son, EJ Three, is just transferred to A and M. Um, he's getting his bachelor's there in uh engineering, right? To come on and be a part of what we're doing on the development side. So my understanding is that we're building a legacy company um through his side, that his son's going to step up and take over and and so on and so forth. I know that for, I know that for us and me personally, we've got a really good run to twenty thirty-three as as a byproduct. I think that your contract for operations and maintenance would be survivable to the local entities as well, right? So like I said, we would be the white hats, but a lot of the operations and maintenance, specifically any day-to-day stuff, is going to be. Guys that we have, you know, approved electricians here that we have locally, right? As a byproduct. And so there would be some form of surviv- survivability as a part of that or something happens that neither default. Or we're no longer in business or we get bought out or something like that. But right now, the idea is that the consortium becomes a legacy type of business and it just passes me. Awesome. Well, if there aren't any more questions, I thank y'all so much for the time. Thank y'all for the opportunity. And um like I said, if there are any questions about the proposal itself, anything else from that side, you guys just let us know and we'll be the turnaround.
Okay, yeah, move on with the sound items. Any questions for those?
You, you remarked that generally this is a heavy expenditure month every year, right?
Pretty much. I did give you some, yeah, reasons why there.
Yeah.
I think what I um, when I look at that monthly expenditure report. At this point in the year, what I'm looking at is that year-to-date amount. At this point in the year, what I'm looking at is that year-to-date amount. And comparing it to last year, year before that or the year before that. Because I remember we had special things happening in the last couple of years with COVID dollars that we're not going to have anymore. So then we're not going to have those expenditures, right? So then you would think that our expenditures should be less, right? So that's what I'm looking for is to make sure that we're less, that we should be, we should be.
Yeah, that'll be hard when we lose our, like, pre-COVID year office five years. Because I feel like that's a level set.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It is. And then you're going to have to kind of, maybe I'll just keep a couple years.
Be with that, you know, that crazy chaos.
There's lots of effects, obviously.
Take motion through the consent items. Which is the second of the favor say I?
I.
Said I'm the approved in correspondence system. Move on to public forum.
At the end, I have a question that's not related to what I'm talking about here. Everybody just, yes, no. One of the things that I have been um, talking about when there were other issues coming up. Has been the, the program where I'm down to teaching for just one school now. But I've been there for eighteen years, it's University of Maryland. And what they've been doing, uh, for one thing, they use international standards, which are higher than our national standards. But they uh, around twenty fifteen, they selected concepts that went across. That could be used in all disciplines. So what you basically see is uh. Think of some three-dimensional thing and you just like walk around it and look at it from different perspectives because it has a variety of uses. And with all of us having different life experiences, we'll relate to it one way, but then maybe, oh, yeah, hadn't thought of looking at it like that. So it kind of expands your knowledge of various things. And I've been mentioning that a little bit. We are now down to the point where the focus is now on. Improving teacher relationships with students to assist them in looking at these concepts. From a variety of perspectives across disciplines. And um, what it means is instructors have to stop focusing on, well, I am the expert here. We're going to look at it this way and they don't really relate to the students as well as they could. And yet if they. Uh, there are ways of developing these relationships that actually help the students to better look at these concepts. And feel more open to experimenting with applying them in a variety of ways. So uh, yes, we have a lot of online things going on. And after I sent the email, I found some notes from an online saying that I had handwritten, they weren't on my computer. So what I ended up sending you this time, just to show one of the things that we're doing here. Uh, I saw, uh, actually selected, well, I didn't select it, the head of our department did. This happened to be a departmental meeting coming up uh, in April for me. And every department is at a different place in this evolution of things and what they have in the way of instructors here. But uh, in the list of topics that I included in the email to you, a copy of my email. Was dealing with students who maybe need some additional assistance. And I don't want to say it's maybe like an IEP, but it could be some little things and you have to consider this. Uh, in terms of relating to them to help them relate to the information. And there are a variety of ways that fit in with what we're doing in expanding our communications and the way we go about. And I'm one of the ones that's only online, but I have students in various places around the world because of the military students. In addition to in the country and occasionally, like even this spring, I have high school students that are taking the course. And have different set of life experiences and even where they're at in their development. But the reason I'm bringing this up is because up here. And I know teachers are doing something around here as part of your just, but I don't know what they're doing. I don't know if the public knows what it is or where they're at or how they're looking at things. And I guess I know Baxter has some teachers that are really, really good at relating to students. And being able to figure out how to get them to connect to things mentally, connect to concepts and apply them. And they're expanding the ways they go about this, but not all of them are. I like what we're dealing with where I happen to be teaching and, and other schools too. So what I was wondering was for a couple of things, one, would it be possible? Right now it's coming down to you, Zach, Rob's going to be gone, but if the principal reports might include some updates on that. If uh, and I know you're leaving too, but the newsletter could include something on that. To start informing the public about this. It would help one of your goals to improve public relationships with people. And that could also help in the support system for the students. Maybe in a variety of ways or better understand life experiences to help relate. There are a number of ways that could be expanded that can also help the community. And I for one would really like to know very much where you're at, but I can't possibly be the only one in the community that's in that position. And that's the gist of what I have for that. Now, my question brief. At the January meeting, when we, of course, were talking about the events that happened over at Perry. The comment was made, well, quarterly, we will talk about some student safety issues and that April would be the next month. So my question is simply, is April going to be, you know, an opportunity for that topic to come up in here? Yep. All I wanted to know ahead of time.
On to the principal reports.
My mind's short, so you go and eat up all my time. So I did talk about it previously, um, but um, Bryce Amos did come, he's the executive director from Solution Tree on uh, March eighteenth. And presented us with a flag and certificate for us becoming a promising practice school under the Solution Tree guidance. Um, really what it looks at is we, as an elementary, have worked really hard to collaborate, um, use data and focus on learning. And they recognized us for our efforts in that domain. Um, so proud of where we sit in that and know that there's still more work to be done. At no point do we feel like we're complacent and happy with where we are. We want to continue to get better. Um, but it is nice to be recognized for the hard work that we have put in, um, and where we currently stand. Um, so we do have a flag displayed and our certificate displayed in the elementary, so if we come down, you'll see it um, as you walk by the elementary office. So something we're proud about for sure. Um, currently we have a food drive going on in the elementary, um, and it's a part of a kindergarten unit. And those kindergarten students will take that up to the food bank um, in a couple of weeks. So trying to tie some curricular things with humanitarian work that we have here in Baxter. So a great little unit for our kindergartners. We did have a science consultant come in from the AIA over the last month and try to work ways to bring science um, better into our classroom. We have set aside time for it, um, but we really wanted to try and figure out ways to better uh, implement some science standards inside of our classrooms. So it was great to hear from them, um, to see and get creative in how we bring science into our classrooms. And then a lot of the work that we've, that I've seen over the last couple of weeks in the elementary specifically, is our revisiting of some priority standards. And trying to ensure that our PLC process is cyclical, that we are referring back to um, the things that we find to be the most important inside of classrooms. And that our time is spent on those priority standards. Um, so revisiting them on the different resources that we now have in play. Um, over the last couple of years, we've um, adopted many different curriculums. So making sure that what we are teaching is um, in accordance to what we believe in priority standards. So that work is ongoing, um, but it has been pretty heavy over the last, last month. Um, teacher teams getting together, collaborating, looking through the standards and putting together new documents to make sure that everything is aligned. And, and is best practice. So proud of the hard work that our teachers continue to put in to make decisions for what's best for kids. Um, so and the last thing is, is that we had our initial meeting for um, book blast. So if you remember last year, we had that fundraiser at the end of the year. Um, what it provided was every single one of our students with books um, to go home with during summer. Um, last year we raised over fifteen hundred books. Um, what it allowed then was for um, at least five books to every kid. Some kids got more depending on how much was raised, but every single kid went home with at least five books in our elementary. And it totaled over twenty thousand dollars in contributions um, for the entire program. So we've revisited that conversation, um, looking to bring that back this year. Uh, we're a little hesitant just because it was so good last year and wanting to see if it's maybe something we want to look at as an every other year type option. Um, but kind of got to the agreement that if we can get fifteen hundred books in kids' hands, then why we should try. Um, so I think that's kind of the route that we'll go and, and see if we can do that again and have kids walk out of here for end of summer break with, with books in hands. And something to enjoy over the summer break, so. What I got?
You talked about science, um, how much is our STEM room getting used? I mean, when we did, it was supposed to be kind of elementary and I guess Rob can chime in too, but is it getting utilized pretty good or?
It is, yeah. So um, every single week, we designate a teacher that is going to go in to have a thirty-minute time of, of STEM. For the week. It's a week-long project that they work in depth with one teacher that rotates the entire year. It goes out of my weekly schedule, who's, who's in STEM, Greg teaches that. Um, in addition to our library STEM time, which is a special. So multiple opportunities throughout the week that they are inside of that room. Um, some in a more project-based look as a week-long project. Some, and then the guidance, or not the guidance, but the library slash STEM time is more individual time that we may have just individual activities around those things. So a lot of different things, a lot of hands-on learning, but also was in one there that was more science and relating to. So it's, it's, Greg's doing a really good job inside that room with, with, with our kids.
Twice, twice a day to one period.
I mean, I didn't want it.
It would be eighty percent if you went by and saw kids in there working with, you know.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else for them? Um, I just want to touch on a couple of things going on, some great opportunities for our kids. One, not a, it is a great opportunity for kids, we have ICAS testing next week. Um, it doesn't just happen, so kind of like, you know, thanks to um, our teachers now for security reasons have to take. You know, be approved to be able to give the test. The, the security on this test is just increased every year like crazy. So that puts a lot of stress on our system ahead of time. We do them all online. Couple of kids may have a paper pencil in their IEP, but um, we start next week. Uh, one thing I really have appreciated, we've done it for a long time, is we feed our, feed all kids breakfast each morning before we test. We'll test from eight-thirty to ten each day. Uh, we give every kid a free breakfast. I give them my best five minutes down fourteen at half and how we're going to beat everybody around us. And we, we give pretty good, we give pretty good effort. Our kids, we've had some success, we put the posters up where we've ranked. Uh, US News will report, um, you know, we've done well. Uh, a lot of that, you just beat the curve by giving great effort. It's, it's great data. If we don't score well, we know where we're lacking, but we don't know if we don't have a great effort where we're at. So um, I feel really good about where we're at, but we'll, you know, it'll be another probably May meeting that we can give you some, hopefully some great data back. One of the most exciting things I think we do, and, and I don't even know how long we've been doing it, ten years, and I stole it from uh, somebody. Cause that's what we do in our business is steal anything good we can get our hands on with senior exit interviews. And our senior exit interviews, every senior will do a senior exit interview uh, to be able to uh, complete graduation. Ours this year are April twenty-third and twenty-fourth. It's a Tuesday and a Wednesday. Uh, kids have a thirty-minute slot, we do them in three different rooms. Kids invite parents, they invite peers, they invite people that influence them to get to the place they are in graduation. Um, but it's also a way for us to interview them back and get some exit, you know, feedback. And it's not always great, hey, you know, I'll ask a question, if you had a magic wand, could change one thing about your experience here? If you could be principal for a day. What I want to listen to is not patting ourselves on the back. We do a lot of great things without, what, what didn't work for you? So we can try to make improvements. One thing I will tell you, I know we have three new board members and I've probably, maybe everybody sat on them before. Our kids and our staff notice when bored, we don't ask you to come both nights and stay for four hours. But if you, anytime you want to bop in between three-thirty and seven on those two nights. I think it's one of the most worthwhile things when you see kids celebrate not just their four years, but their twelve years here. And talk, they talk about teachers. Uh, I, I hope you could find a time and, and if it doesn't work this year, uh, hopefully it will down the road. But we would appreciate any sort of board of, you know, visibility that those two days, April twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, a couple of things, our kids outside the building, our son of eighth graders went to DC New York this last week. Uh, got some really positive feedback, was the first time I didn't really handed it off to Amanda Hoffman. And had a couple of people reach out, just what a great job she did in some stressful travel situations coming back. Kids were upbeat, the classes I was in when they were doing cap, uh, capturing kids arts good things, just listening to all the things. Um, that each kid thought was maybe the best part of their trip or what they liked. And uh, it, it's powerful for those kids that get a, you know, get and see those cities and do that. Um, Travis, one thing I, why we're in business is what kids are going to do when they graduate and what they're doing out of here. And to just start to have a plan. Travis took all of our freshmen this week uh, to a huge career fair over Marshalltown. Just to begin to start to think about things I'm interested in, listening to businesses, and there was a lot of positive feedback from that. And speaking of STEM, um, Ms. Wasnowski, our middle school science took every eighth grade girl, tied with state this week. To um, Women in STEM Conference there. And that actually, they came back a little late to junior high track and they were buzzing. So when you get kids coming back that you know it was a pretty good day when they're chatty about it and what they got. So I always love the teaching that's going on outside of our, our walls. Um, and the, really the last thing I want to talk about was what always keeps us up at night and it is just that staffing. So um, just to give a little bit of where we're at without heavy specifics that has eaten up. It was beginning to eat up a lot of my time and, and I, I will tell you, you have one first chance to make a great first impression. And these two guys have done that tenfold in the last four weeks. Clay, every night is hitting my text up and cell phone and emails about this person. And I've reached out to this person, yay yay. We interviewed four on Monday, great interviews. Clay was here the entire time. One thing that was great feedback for me, he started talking about the candidates. And, and he said, I appreciated just listening to what, when you, when you're selling Baxter, talking about Baxter. He's, I got pages of notes that you talked about with the candidate, so it was just a win-win. A lot of people say, hey, I don't even start till July one or June one, and that's not the business we're in. So to know we have guys that are here tonight and, and trying to, that, that's a monster. One good piece of news, um, I think it's a good piece of news. Uh, we're probably going to turn over our entire, almost our entire middle school. So Mrs. Luther's agreed to stay out for another semester. So within that, we interviewed some student teachers because we were struggling with candidates and thought what a good avenue that is to find some student teachers. There wasn't anybody doing it in the spring. There were a couple that people came to me and said, hey, these are really good people. They haven't started, started student teaching. And then so our wheels started turning and saying, hey, what if we got a student teacher in in the fall? That could be mentored by a veteran teacher and use that in student teaching and then pass the baton in January. And we landed one that we feel really good about, that will student teach with Kristen. And Deanne in here has agreed because she has to have an eight-week placement in the elementary. So we're excited about that. That's just the way that we're finding things like that. Um, we have a, she's coming in, I think both these guys on Friday, we have a math person that we're really close to getting to the shore. And, and those things are happening. We've got some gaps, but um, we've got some offers out there, we've got some things moving. But every time we fill it on, we have one more that we're, is leaving. But it is, I mean, we know this job is only as good as the people we put in those rooms. So if we put the time and effort in now, it's going to pay off tenfold. So glasses half full and uh, I don't know if Mrs. Luther's on, I know we approved the resignation. Last month, probably next month, we'll need to approve her for a contract for half the year in twenty-four. So I, I think it's a win-win things you can do like that, especially with turnover, so many people have that in place and. Yeah, but I, hats off to the, Clay especially, I mean, I would say that if he wasn't sitting here, just been really impressed with the last couple, two, three weeks. the last couple, two, three weeks, um even just taking things over. Rob, let me, let me get after, let me give him a shot and in doing those things. So it hasn't definitely all been on my shoulders. So we'll keep reporting back every month and we'll keep hearing approval. So that will be a good thing. So.
I'm really excited. Thank you, guys. Getting creative and all that extra work put into it. Boggy dog girl.
A a really ironic thing, wherever you want to stand on the bill that we probably won't have an AEA job tomorrow when we wake up, but I received two emails today from out of state people as soon as that was passed, interested in our position. So I will promise you, those people saw the for sure teacher bill passed to fifty or forty seven five, whatever it is, because I took two today and we actually have a Zoom interview with one of them already. So just things like that. Yeah.
Can you either include in notes or send an email out about the accident interviews?
Yes.
So that I would like to.
Yeah, I will. Um also a reminder to just the board admin as well. And Clay and Chris, you're more than we would love to have. It's just, it's a really some obviously and 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 Chris Smith's class, he's actually putting a little heavier emphasis because they're doing it as a class project on top of a graduation requirement. So they have a little bit more that their boxes are checking, but um three rooms, two nights, three thirty to probably six thirty, half hour each one. So I will send it out. A week out, I'll send a reminder to everybody. Yep.
Yes. Move enrollment.
I was looking back, see when Kristen resigned, we found it is. So now I'm on the right. Um open enrollment. Okay, open enrollment ends. We have Brianna Griner, David Griner, their child Sebastian to attend Baxter from Newton starting next year. He's a kindergarten. And then um Amy and Thomas Foster, their son Isaac, a sixth grader to attend Baxter from West Marshall. And um John and Darcy Damo, their daughter Jamie, seventh grade, to attend Baxter dual enrollment for activities um next year. And then Kenny Pogue and Dana Pogue, their children, Jalen, low grade, Eve, Hayden, Kinnick, Kinsel, and Kyle, Kylie, Kyla, Kyla in sixth grade um from VCLUW. It's all next year.
So they'll start next year.
Yeah. We'll do those and then they out. Do we do them separately?
We don't have to do it. It's information.
Oh, okay.
Make motion to approve the opening on the in applications.
So you can say all those in favor, Zach? Bye bye.
And just for your information for the student that's going to go out, um I did talk to the parents and um I can't remember if one or both are professors at Iowa State, but they both work in Ames. And so their little one was already going to preschool in Ames, and so they just really wanted to continue with them names. So it wasn't anything anti Baxter. It was just that they already go to Ames for.
First now.
So we have um resignation from Anna Brown as secondary science teacher and coaching sponsor. Do we do the resignations then? Separate, yeah.
Motion to accept the resignation.
Second.
It's in favor, Zach? All right, I say no resignation accepted.
Right. And then we have a contract for one Mr. Clay Harold. Secondary principal, uh starting next fall, actually starting last. But we appreciate all his volunteer work so far. And I echo also what Rob said. I mean, it's just, they've both been a delight to work with. I just got in a play this week, but um he's been a gem. And then Chris and I have talked several times. So it's, yeah, I mean, they have big shoes to fill, but but I think they're going to be just fine. So anyway, we need to approve Clay's contract. Oh, um the one down there, we're going to table that till next month because we have to do like an MOU because we don't technically have the um resignation from the teacher. We need to have the actual resignation before we.
I must have must have done that.
Yeah, I just did a little bit ago. I intended to bring the MOU to you. It got a little lengthy and I don't want to, you guys have to look at it at the last minute. I want to give you time to look at it.
Yep.
I think the delay in the yes, they funding is tough for the teachers verbal, they're leaving, but they're just a little nervous until they sign a contract or no one was offering contracts because we didn't know. So I'm sure in the next thirty days we'll have two or three, but we already know they're leaving. We just can't. And it's a little creative because he, two that we're hiring, one, it won't be done until we tell you July. It's a raffle, so.
He'll have a a teacher in August.
Yeah. And then like the student teacher. So we're, I've asked, worked with Julie last couple of days of, you know, an understanding just to be able to have someone writing that we're going to keep you on after December student teaching and you're going to stay on with us after that.
Yeah, it's not really working, people tricking on, but it it just kind of. Sorry, but um it just gives both parties um a little bit of comfort in knowing that we're both committed.
The motion to approve the contract, Clay? So my second. It's fair, Zach? Contact approved.
Um let's do one more um because of Kristen Luther's. We approved her resignation last month. So I would like to have the board approve her rescinding her designation. Okay.
Yeah, so she can't resign and then apply for a new job, right?
Right, because then we have to go through that whole application process again. So she's just going to resend her resignation. And that then that's it. Then when she gets to November-ish, then she'll give us another resignation.
Or you could not resend it and you'll just go back to another plan.
I'll make the motion to accept the rescind resignation, Kristen Luther.
Thank you, Kristen.
In favor of the rescinded resignations? I, I.
I'm just a couple bullet points. Um Bill um has gotten a quote to re re uh look at door lock handles for all the classroom doors that need um just the quick access to lock them for safety reasons. And um the quote is seventeen thousand six hundred fifty dollars to replace those, but we can use the um school safety grant to help pay for that. And then um I had a meeting or a Zoom meeting with Homeland Security and they talked through some of the different projects. And there's some that have a lot more hoops to jump through. So I think we're going to switch around. We'll still do the, some of the projects, but we're going to um use the security grant to pay for the locks. So that'll free up some other money to pay for some of the other ones that we want to do. But there's just less hoops with any federal grant. There's just a lot of stuff, but the locks are an easy one to just implement. So we're going to go ahead and have Bill take care of that with the grant. And then we'll um use some other money to pay for some of the other things. And then also.
No, I'm, no, I'm sorry. I was just, I was looking at this bill the other day. Um they didn't really break out the cost of the door. They just have the installed guy. I'm assuming it's the the whole lock and everything, the engine's lever and then install. Bill not, I mean, is that, I'm just asking, like, is that not one of those things, like, you could buy the material and he work on putting the one? I mean, that's a, I mean, you start thinking about three ninety five a door. I know sometimes those those nice door are expensive.
But yeah, I don't know what break down. Yeah.
Yeah, we could, I mean, we could ask about that. Um yeah, I mean, I can certainly see if that's something he's capable of doing. Or not. I just, I again, I don't know with some of these like special safety locks.
I mean, yes, that's pretty much that door handle. Just we're talking about the button. Yeah, yeah.
So you're not having to re drill any of them.
Right. But no, I do know those are expensive. I just questioned like, are we spending a hundred dollars a door, you know, in labor versus?
Yeah.
Fifteen minute thing.
I can certainly, I'll I'll put a bullet point to talk to him tomorrow.
I know his list is long, so I mean, that's like not to add to that, but.
Also, sort of at the last minute, um that facilities, reps and transportation is a link now. You can click on that link. I added a doc, the facility needs request. You guys ask for an update um on a monthly basis. And so if you just open that up, it'll tell you um in red where we are in that progress. Okay?
Okay.
What's your thought about? So for the relocation, we have to do that for a requirement. Is there like a deadline for that? We don't have to do that. That was just one of the things that was recommended. Any of the things that we want to do within the safety grant have to have been recommended uh by Homeland Security. Oh, so they recommended that, but they recommended of lots of things and we couldn't afford to do all the things. So that was one of the things, but um if we do that relocating the site and we just use other money, we don't have to go through the whole process with hiring an architect and then having the architect look at the plans and so.
The Fire Marshall.
Yeah, so it's one that we can just decide that we're going to do it and then we just do it. But if we do it through the grant and we catch, but you know, if we were going to decide that we're going to spend that seventeen thousand dollars on locks out of you know, pebble or general fund, now we can just use the grant and then use the money that we would have spent on the locks to move aside.
We're basically flipping it.
Yeah, just kind of swap.
No, that's not that. I just want to make sure. One thing that you do have to keep in mind though is so then once they um, you know, give us a list of things that they thought that we should upgrade, then we had to write the application for the grant. You have to specify in that grant what you're going to use those funds on. So we we can't just grab something out of the blue and start flipping things out. It would have to be an amendment and things like that. So we're, we're trying to be very careful about not having to do all that and delay the grant proceeds.
But the locks, like security door locks were something that was already. Yep, yeah, we just didn't acknowledge that these. Yeah, it's great. And that that'll fix the middle school teachers.
Yeah.
Their problem again.
You talk to Bill, maybe get an update on garage door deal. I just don't want that to fall by the wayside.
I think I might um put that on that facility needs.
Yeah, I kind of looked through it quick and I didn't see.
That was an insurance thing, so, but I'll put it on there and then I'll just put.
Actually, I'll see, think of, well, that can just kind of be a master running list.
Did we keep stop working on some of the school this week?
Yeah. So if you look on there, um it's been, well, I don't know about this week, but on this, there were a couple of of mentions.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, looks like Mr. Brummels has done, but then I'd heard about this through my own kid that uh Mrs. Buck maybe didn't. And I just carry some of that with me. Well, I don't know, a lot of sound. Anybody else hear that?
Yeah, I think they've been bringing sweatshirts for a week or two.
Yeah, yeah.
In this buck ones?
Yeah, like packing a blanket.
Yeah.
That's kind of.
Send an email out that's the kids could bring blankets and sweatshirts if they want.
I was just carrying that. So.
Did you know this, please?
No, but I know my office is often just freezing. So for almost, I couldn't get the air off. I covered his class. I mean, it was blowing air like cold. I think I was told the one fifth grade.
Yeah, it was heat. So I wonder if maybe.
Seems like something she tries to don't know.
You got air too.
But does he know about Davis?
There was something on the motor in my office for sure. So there's something on. Is there, it's a part, part maybe this, that's what I, I'm getting it from a eleven year old.
So am I.
My job is all getting it from a eleven year old.
We're waiting on a part. It seems like we're waiting on a lot of parts.
We can follow up with that.
Yeah, I know.
But thank you for bringing that up because I was and it was just quietly shivering down there, I guess.
Don't approve the district order.
So it's not the Carmen Johnson who has been using for both past lots of years.
We've driven in three, three years terms. That's a as a state thing, that's not us deciding. Now we can go.
Should correct it. They're one of the few that actually do schools anymore.
Yep, and it's getting fewer and fewer and fewer. Um I put out quite a few RFPs, requests for proposals and for kids. And it's been great since COVID that we've been doing it um offsite. So I'll upload um everything. They'll give me a list of the things that they want. It's like four page long, but then I'll just upload it to a Google Drive. And then they'll assign me a certain day. And so then I know that day that they're just working on me that whole day. So I know to keep my schedule a little bit clean that day because they're going to just email on me, you know, with, can you give me this? Can you give me that? I thought, and and maybe they have, but I thought, well, maybe our bill will go down a little bit since they're not having to travel. Well, in means in the three years that they that we had the, you know, the previous quote was before COVID. And so everything is skyrocketing since, so I was a little bit surprised at me.
What percent did it go up?
Um remind me what the uh what the final was on that one. It's a journey. It's down towards the bottom.
Got a three year. It was every year.
Yeah, right. But give me the bottom. Yeah, yeah. And so I think we're at eight right now. Which would have been quoted to us three years ago.
So does it shall not be more than?
Yes.
So that's just saying that's a, they'll charge us?
Yeah, and then just to get it.
It'll get there.
It'll get there.
Let's make a call out. Yeah.
Who are that? They have a motion to approve Multi-Cormorant Johnson. Second.
Second.
They say I, but.
Bye.
Order been approved?
I'm sure and sweet. Also, um when I wrote this, I was just on Cory, like we had just had spring break and so we've hardly been back. We've been together for the workshop. Um but in the meantime, um we've been working with uh Chris. We've done some initial just transition planning stuff and that's conversations. And so that's been really productive. And then um we've been talking about as an admin team, you know, the transition and the handoff plans for next fall. Like um we've got the calendar just about ready to bring to you, but we're waiting to see like, are they going to change the start date and or not? And if they're not, then we can bring it, you know, next month. But if they, well, either way, hopefully they don't within. But um if they do change the start date, that's going to change our back to school PV and all that sort of thing. So we're kind of in limbo right now with that. And then we just need to have some conversations about like, you know, what we have planned for next summer and fall needs to be able to, you know, be jive with what Chris and Clay and Wendy and Zach want to do next fall. So just a lot of transition conversations we've been having. Um otherwise, it's just been kind of just kind of getting back in the groove of things and then kind of getting things ready for the um joint city school meeting next, next week. Yeah, we got that. Just remember that's next Wednesday. It's next Wednesday or Tuesday?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday at um six and it's heat. It will be in the middle school comments, but we hosted this year. Every other year we host it and then next year the city hosted, but it's our true hosted this year.
So I've sent out invitations or, you know, requests uh for people to um you know, present or just give us, you know, an update. And so I have gotten um uh confirmation back from Brandon Tausma, so he'll be here. Um and then a couple of the others so far, so I'll send you the agenda, um whether you plan on meeting here or not. Um I didn't want it to make it look like I expected you, but um it's it's an hour long and so it's a pretty quick process or whatever. Yeah, is that? Yeah.
Make sure people know, set the middle school comments because we've had it in the what's comes before.
Yeah.
And change your.
Actually have it on at the top of our agenda, so and I'll publicize that agenda too.
Otherwise, we talked about it. Otherwise, that's about it. And you're going to, you're going to share that agenda at this point, a few days to leave or?
Yeah, I was kind of hoping because on that agenda, I'm trying to get all the confirmations on there, so every so everyone all can see who is going to actually. Be that person, um but I'll send it to you for sure a few days ahead of it.
So I remember when we talked a few months ago, there were a few like working items that we wanted to.
They're on the top, they're on there, yep, yep.
Yes, and then what we see, um that's our own. Those are both on there, it's like. Thank you.
The boosters.
Thank you, the. The boosters?
The.
Radio free.
Radio.
Yeah, we, that's not on there.
Yeah, I don't have that, I'll have that. Yeah, I did send it to um Doug Bishop um to see if he was okay with what was on there, if he wanted to add anything, I just started posting, so. We'll add the. Oh, um. Yeah, you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We should do that, okay.
Do we say it out loud or do we say where, like, we agree?
So, yeah, and you're saying that they're giving us.
Correct, yeah, so we'll move on to initial problems from.
And you'll read what they're, what they have in there, but shall we just language at this point?
Right, not specify like exactly, but.
Like this whole, you don't have to read it all, but you can tell, say what they want.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so do you want to be a initial proposal? Um since, well, like we mentioned earlier, SSA was just finally set today. We're just kind of talking in matter of contact language at this point in time. Because there was really no reason in negotiating salaries because there's no money available. Um but yeah, so they're just kind of um. Speaking on uh bereavement leave. Changes to the bereavement leave. Okay, who was it, we're going to be a family.
Maybe some clarifications on on the language, I don't think they're really asking for.
Right, yeah, just to.
Clarify, yeah.
It was in the family.
Yep.
Maybe an additional day of bereavement for the close family or another close family that um. What's called second parent leave, maybe kind of fraternity leave, I guess you might go and say, but second parent leave. Uh also is what they've proposed, so so. So leading into that, we'll we we will go into exam session to kind of discuss our thoughts on it. Make any recommendations back when we. So we will take a motion to go into exam session.
Morning.
Second.
Second.
They say aye, aye, say no. So first session at seven thirty three.